2017 Planning Commission, we'll move on to new business. New business is the legacy lots of Cortland LLC. Scott Cole representing the owners Norwood City School District, Norwood Baptist Church. They are submitting a preliminary plan and for properties consisting of 4300 Allison Street, 2041 Cortland Avenue, 2037 Cortland Avenue, 2030 Ware, 2038 Ware, and 2042 Ware. At this time with the applicant come forward and explain what they're proposing for this project. And sir, for the record, can you, we're gonna have that, we'll do that, please. Sir, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Scott Cole. The address is 2037 Cortland Avenue. And that's Norwood.
And you have submitted an application at the city received on July 18, 2017. A very detailed application describing how you are planning to adaptively reuse the former Allison School and a former church on Cortland Avenue. The main purpose of the PUD is that you need to add some additional height to the flat portions of the roofs on Allison School and the Cortland Avenue Church. Otherwise, it would just be interior and exterior renovation of these historic structures. Is that correct?
That's correct. Also, we're looking to replace the existing six and seven foot fences that are now chain link with decorative wrought iron and continue that from the school down Cortland to encompass all, the whole project.
In addition, you're significantly reducing the amount of blacktop asphalt area and replacing that with green space.
That's correct. We calculate we're removing around 50% of the blacktop space around the two Allison schools and we'll be putting that into like say grass and other type of soft landscaping.
And we were discussing the price, these are going to be condominiums, 112 units of condominium spread out over four buildings.
Yeah, that's correct. They're going to be owner occupied condominiums. The price range we're looking at is starting around $100 a square foot, going up to $150 a square foot depending on which building and what location they are in the building. Cause putting the new units on top of the two flat roof buildings obviously will entail more new construction which will carry a higher building cost for us and that would just be reflected in the price.
And being owner occupied, that would be the initial price point so that with appreciation of these units could appreciate where these units that resell could go anywhere from 150 on up if somebody buys it now and five years from now sells.
I would think that's the assumption of a lot of people especially based on what happened to the prices down like and over the line when they first started with their condo units and you know, they've more than doubled in price.
And based on your application, you are through these adaptive reuses trying to preserve some of the more unique aspects of these buildings, both exterior and interior.
Yes, exterior wise, we don't really intend to do that many changes. The only thing we'll be doing is like saying the Baptist Church will be moving, removing the large staircases in the front on Cortland. Actually on the Allison School that fronts where we're going to reinstate the original entrance to it and create, an entrance into the school from the street level which gives us our ADA access from the street directly into the bottom floor on that. We're going to be removing the little two story, two level like walkway bridge between the two Allison schools and we'll reinstate that into a grass soft landscaped area.
And these are, the phases of these renovations and new construction are anticipated to be three years total or are we looking at a 10 year project?
Now, we are saying three years for the total project, three and a half years. If it sells like we're anticipating, we will, we may accelerate the program but we plan to, basically we're doing one building at a time for several reasons. One of the main reasons is to get condo financing, FHA financing, which will fund 50% of the units inside a building. We have to have an FHA certified which means the people buying it can get FHA loan for three and a half percent down which makes it even more affordable. We have to have each building fully done. So if we did the whole complex, we'd have to finish the whole complex whereas by doing one phase, one individual phase at a time as an individual standalone unit, then it allows us to get the FHA certification and then, and then move on from there.
And in terms of the impact on the neighborhood, the amount of trips being generated are actually less than what was formerly there with the school and the church in terms of users. In terms of services, it's not as significantly more than what was there previously with those, the school and the church.
Yeah, I would agree with that especially with the school buses that used to come in the morning and in the afternoon. So there were large vehicles and all the parent traffic and the Norwood Baptist School, the academy they had. So I would think you're looking at far less traffic with these being residential units and schools and churches.
And the only other possible impact this could have would be additional school aged children but Norwood has sufficient capacity to accommodate those as well. So there's really no significant cause for concern that this is going to be an additional burden on the city for any service.
That's correct.
And in fact, it's probably most likely going to lead to significant improvement in that area which would cause a reduction in the amount of city services needed in terms of fire, police, runs EMS and that sort of.
That's correct.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I told you before and I, and I still stand by it, these, we've seen a lot of renderings and projects over the years. I mean, we've seen them one right after another one. This has every appearance to be exactly what the city needs. We keep hearing, you know, the businesses come in, the business come in, what are you gonna have, you know, when is housing gonna be there, when for seniors, when housing gonna be there for professional people? It would seem to me that this would fill the bill, you know, and, and so you got a nice area, it's brand new, it's fenced off. And I think that there's every design in here, floor plan from smaller to larger, I think it would fit the needs of just about anybody, I would guess. The only thing, some people may not be familiar, if you move into a, you buy the condominium and I would take that, that there would be some sort of an agreement if you own a condominium, is there so much taxes you pay, is there an upkeep or, you know?
That's correct. It's, I actually stated in, in the binder, but there is an HOA fee that will be, every unit will, will pay as a, and it'll be a fixed, a fixed fee to begin with. And then when the whole project is done, we actually then turn it over to the homeowners association and they, they, the owners themselves will then manage their HOA and they'll be able to make any changes they want within like zoning law. And the HOA will be set up to like local federal and state laws and it will be, and again, going back to the FHA funding, it will have the initial funding to be in compliance with that. So the answer is yes, it will, it becomes self maintaining, the exterior and the interior, it's known as studs in, so once the people walk into their unit, they become responsible for any maintenance on the inside. But again, our plan is we basically are taking everything, all the old services out and we're using the classroom, the existing classrooms as a template. We're not moving any load bearing walls. So we're running all new sanitary, all new water, all new electrics. Everything is new, the kitchens are new, the appliances are new, the HVAC systems are new. So realistically, maintenance should be extremely low for like say 10 to 15 years on this. The, all those, all the roofs will be renewed and minimum 25 year old roofs. All the windows are going to be new, so a lot of things that the HOA would maintain are going to be new. So they should be able to accrue a sizable reserve.
So by having that, I mean, if, if I don't have to pay for grass cutting and snow removal and all that, it, what you would pay, would take the place of that, to pay for the grass cutting and?
That's correct. It's basically pay, we're, we're saying right now it's $125 a month and that covers grass cutting, snow removal, waste removal, you know, solid waste removal. And then it also then goes into an account that accrues, that's like say 25 years down the road if a roof needs to be replaced, the funds are there to do it.
So the rules would be, I've never owned a condominium, so I, so the rules would be, it would, the rules would set up, it would be for the protection of the owners. In other words, if somebody decides they wanna, working on cars or doing any of that, that's all, you know, their investment is protected by those type of rules.
I was just gonna say, one of the rules that, there's, there's a standard set of rules that you put in as a template and then you can add additional rules. And one of the rules we were going to put is that you can't work on your car inside the site, you know, it's that, that just doesn't work. And there, and there's gonna be marked guest spaces that only guests can park at that, you know, you can't have a condo then park there and let someone else park in your assigned spot. It's like guest spaces. So yeah, there'll, there'll be a certain control to keep the ambience of, of it.
I've heard nightmares about some of these associations where they, they say, well, you can't have a flag or, you know, it can't, it can't get carried away so, but a lot of it is gonna be for the protection of, of the people who purchase condominiums so the quality of the, the structure and the area surround it stays up.
Is maintained, that's correct.
Alright.
And what I said to begin with, when we finish the whole project, we hand the whole project to the HOA. The resident, all the residents own it together. We have, once it's done, the legacy lots on Cortland LLC has no, no more financial interest in it. And then the actual owners themselves can make any changes they want and it's, it's basically you have like a board on the HOA and then the members can vote for changes and things like that. So it's, they can, they control it.
Oh Lord, that means elections. Now let's take care of that. No, I appreciate, I, like I said, this, you know, for us to have been around a long time, we keep hearing this is exactly what the city would like to see. We bring in businesses but they said there's nothing new construction going up for people who either wanna rent or have a condominium for seniors that don't wanna have the expense of a big house anymore but wanna still be in Norwood.
Yeah, the, we've done some marketing just to see where we're at on that and the target markets we're seeing are the two we identified early and also the price points we're at are, we're funding no price resistance at all. And basically the two, the two groups are the 25 to 30 year olds, they're graduates of Xavier or UC and they wanna get on the property ladder. And then the other one is the older folks, I could say that because I'm one of them, that are downsizing, don't wanna live in the four bedroom house out in the suburbs and cut grass and, and do it and wanna move closer to the city. They're extremely interested in it as well and they like the idea of having the HOA, everything like maintenance free, they don't have to do anything and it's, it's a nice unit and everything's new.
Can I ask a question to a member of the panel? John is a realtor. What's the ripple effect that is possible?
The ripple effect?
Yeah, for something like this.
A lot of people that live in this area, near this area, say a five to seven mile radius that would purchase in there, those homes are gonna be purchased by younger people also. People downsizing, people that are buying, they're buying the expensive homes in Norwood, Oakley, Hyde Park, there's gonna be more of a housing surplus for them.
Do you think it would spread like, you know, in the next block over or something?
I would, I would venture to say it's going to produce tear downs.
And you mean by tearing, people buying older homes and buy a couple lots and tear them down and put?
Yes, and putting new homes in.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
I've got a couple of questions. I got a couple of questions, it's not really questions, just clarification for the people that don't, are not privy to some of this paperwork we have. You're representing the owners of the Norwood City School and the church, correct?
That's correct.
Are you under contract with them?
We're under contract, yeah, we're under contract with both of them.
Okay.
And we are looking to complete, close escrow on this at the end of September.
Okay. And you also have the potential of three to four more buildings?
I would say at the, we also own 2030 and 2034 Ware.
Which are included in this PUD.
Which are the, which are included, and there's another house, it's like 2026 that
2026.
That is like a rental right now and we've looked at possibly, if we can acquire that, maybe demolishing the three buildings and putting another, another building up in that area because there's land and there's, we have, we'll have the land and the parking to do it. Cause once this is done, there will only be those three single family homes and then the two single family homes on the north side of Ware behind the paint shop. Everything else is multifamily existing on the street.
I know that, hold on, Ware, Cortland and even Allison, the streets are fairly narrow. I think there's no parking right now on Allison in front of that unit. Are you gonna be attempting to get parking on there or is it going to affect the size of the street?
If you actually look at this, we have the parking laid out. The reason why we're only taking up 50% of the blacktop, the other 50% is we're going to leave in place for parking. It would be in the back where it says where we do the schedules.
Right.
It looks like this. And it actually shows, we have parking now, I believe, I have the figure here, but I believe it's 130 to 140 units, parking spaces.
Okay. Looking at this, looking at this picture, it shows, I assume that's the south side of the?
That face, no, that's the north side. That faces, that faces Cortland and that, it has a grass front to begin with.
Right, okay.
And then to the west, it's all blacktop and to the east, it's all blacktop. And where, if you actually look, like say at this picture on the cover, it shows the parking to the west and east and the large lot that is behind the Baptist Church and school is remaining. And then we're creating three lots.
Okay, so it's, it's not going to widen the street on Cortland or Ware?
No.
Okay.
No, we're not touching, we're not touching the curbs. All these, all the parking lots are gonna be accessed but through existing curb cuts.
That's all I got.
Got questions from the board? Seeing no more questions, we'll open it up to the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak for the project, please come forward, state their name and address. Anyone who would like to speak for the project? Seeing nobody to speak for the project, anybody who would like to come forward and speak, could you want to speak for the project, sir?
I certainly can.
If you would like to speak for the project, this is your chance. We just need your name and address, sir.
Hi, I'm Nat. I'm Nat Commissar and my address is 7605 DeMar.
And could you just state, your opinion of the project, sir?
Spectacular, to say the least. I am also a realtor and have been working, actually, I don't have a local demographic that I, where I work. I work citywide. I work from Bridgetown to New Richmond to Crittenton to Liberty Township. And there are pockets of the city that desperately need this type of project. Norwood is the poster child of a place that needs this type of a project. I sell houses to young families that move into the east side of Norwood, near Rookwood, all day long. I can think of Josh Means, a young man who bought a house for roughly $140,000 some three years ago and he's already had offers for almost one and a half times his property value since he's moved in. Everyone I speak to about this is thrilled, just beyond belief that somebody's got the vision to do something like this and I just can't say enough good things about it and I can't wait to get to work actually selling it.
At this point, we'll open up to anybody who's wanting to speak against the project. Anybody would like to speak against the project, please come forward and state their name and their address. Seeing no one to speak for or against the project, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Williams. Can we, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. At this time, we'll go into a regular meeting of the August 2nd, 2017 Planning Commission. Jerry, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Williams?
Here.
John Brown?
Here.
And Chris Brown?
Here. At this time, can I have, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from July 12, 2017. Has everyone had an opportunity to review those minutes from that meeting?
Move, accept as if.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Williams, second by Mr. Brown. All those in favor, say aye?
Alright.
Aye. Motion carries. There is no old business. At this time, we will move on to new business. New business being the review and approval of the legacy lots on Cortland LLC. Scott Cole representing owners Norwood City School District, a Norwood Baptist Church, submitting a preliminary plan, unit development plan for properties at 4300 Allison Street, 2037 Cortland, 2041 Cortland, 2030 Ware, 2034 Ware, 2042 Ware, 2046 Ware. Also, we've had a recommendation to include partial 2026 Ware and I would ask for the agreement of the commission of adding 2026 Ware to our review of this PUD. At this time, we've heard from the applicant at the public hearing. Any comments or further questions from the board?
In a way of a comment, I, I really think this is important and does, does this now go to council?
Does it now go to council?
Okay, so ahead of time, I would hope that you would be here at council and I would hope that you would have displays to show council. And another thought, I, I don't know whether, if we can find some display things, I'd like to see some display, display things to put up in the first floor of City Hall. So as people come and go, they can see it. That I think will stir up interest for the council meeting, council members can see it. But I think the more we talk about this, the more we put it out there, the better off it's gonna be. Because I believe it's one of those things, sometimes the word doesn't get out good enough and I don't, I don't care whose fault it is. But if we can have displays for council, but prior to council, if we can have some displays to put up in the first floor of City Hall and with sort of an explanation about, you know, self explanatory and let people see it because the people come and go and I'm telling you, it'll generate interest and, and it'll make council's job and our job a lot easier to, to, to move this along. One, one more question and I, this is not, but I gotta ask it even publicly. Is financing in place? Financing is in place? That's one of the questions I get asked all the time, so that's good. I know, but I'm gonna keep asking it because that, that's one of the things, it's not like it hasn't happened before. We've heard, well, we got one dreamer now that's, doesn't even have a window to throw anything out of, so you know, promised everything and we got nothing. So it's, it's a question and not only I will ask it, well, everybody will ask. But I think however we can promote this before the council meeting, the better off we're gonna be.
I just have one question. If this all gets approved by the council, what is your anticipated, anticipating start date?
I saw the schedule, we would actually like to start in October. I had a meeting with our department, we discussed the plan and the first phase, we would start in October, go in and start taking out the gas, do all the groundwork on the sanitary area, the catering, we need to, and then re-roof the, take roof classes to install the roof, to install the windows, skywinds.
Uh huh.
And then that way we can work through.
So you'd like to get the outside work done before winter?
We get more, so we're gonna work away from the outside. That's the plan. And then I was wondering, hoping you maybe have that, that several people sold, making sense about starting, so it's happening.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I hear one more? Is, is it, as a discussion piece for possible consumers, I noticed, you know, the renderings here show a lot of, and one of the really nice penthouse shows a lot of modern and it won't necessarily, the furniture won't, the furniture shows modern, so it won't have a modern look if you want a more?
We're going for more traditional look, but the, there won't be as much use of brick as the rendering shows, there'll be more windows.
Yeah, I mean.
And like stuck with, stuck with the same color of it, just because of the weight factor and it's, it's modern building technique, but it will look, it will look nice.
Okay.
The worst thing to do is try to duplicate a hundred year old building and it never works, but we're not gonna do the modern.
Okay.
Just as, my comments start from, I know as, as a parent, you always hate to see a school closed. And one of the difficulties with the school closing is what do you do with the building? A lot of communities, what they do is they do nothing with the building and they end up tearing down a school that had a lot of memories and a lot of, the community loved those old schools. We're very fortunate that you sir have decided to take a more thoughtful, a more aggressive approach in reutilizing these historic buildings. We have, unfortunately, there are people who out there feel that the only thing that they can do is scrape the lot and start fresh and build something that is either incompatible or not as good as what they're replacing. You sir have taken the more higher approach of reusing these buildings and I think that we are very lucky that we have somebody willing to take a chance and risk themselves taking these historic buildings and reusing them for a use that we desperately need because we do not have a standard condominium. And what your project is in essence creating is 112 new homeowners that are gonna be vested in our community, that are gonna be vested in this building, that are gonna be vested in the neighborhood and will want to see it improve and will have estates in the neighborhood and will demand services of the city and demand higher services. in the neighborhood, and will demand services of the city, and demand higher services because they are paying for these new condominiums. So you, sir, are actually charging the city to step up as well and provide these services and amenities to these new users by taking on this project of reusing the historic building. And for that, sir, I commend you for taking a more thoughtful, a more aggressive approach that sometimes doesn't necessarily show in developers and people that have come before this commission. Also, I think that we talked about the residual effect. The residual effect is, I was talking about this project with other people, and I said, this is the big hunk of ice falling off of Antarctica. This says to other people who may not, who live in Norwood and they live outside of Norwood, that Norwood is a changing place. It is a place where people want to live. It is a place where people want to raise their families. It is a place that's going to be attractive. And because we're so small, because we have limited housing resources, before this project, we only have 8,000 units in the city. And it may sound like a lot, but when you look at it compared to the city of Cincinnati and what's being sold, it's not that much. It doesn't really, at this point, meet the, meet the demand, and that's why our prices are going to go up. And this project says that you're willing to invest money in it because the prices are going to go up. And the prices are going to change, and our housing values are going to increase. And people need to be aware that that comes with a lot of positives, but it also comes with an awareness that we are going to be facing some new challenges now, such as tear downs, such as unaffordability, and other issues that the city's going to have to step up and address. And Greg Warrus, our planner, and I have discussed several times having residential design requirements, and I think that now's the time to do it. And I think Greg and I are kind of just coordinating when we can present to council and the planning commission some residential design guidelines so that these tear downs that are coming, it's foolish to say they're not, it's foolish to wish it wouldn't happen, but they are coming. The question is, let's make sure that what's being built is going to be as compatible and as thoughtful as your project. Your project, sir, is basically setting the standard now that we should view any other further adaptive reuse, whether it be at U.S. Playing Card or other of these large institutional buildings that may come down. Your project says to people, yes, you can do something successful, and you don't have to start with a vacant lot. You don't have to start by tearing down an historic building or a building that has a lot of memories and value in the community. So this project is important. It's a watershed moment in a sense. And when this is successful, we're going to have to address these new challenges, but also have the benefit of knowing that we have projects such as this, and to hold other applicants to the same high standard which have been presented to us today by this project. So for that, I commend it. The only other question I have is, based on the PUD, you will have to come forward with the design of the proposed building, that you would be the new build, should you acquire that other lot and the other additional lots. And I would charge you with designing that new building such that the architecture of that new building relates and somehow reflects the buildings that are already on the site, making it more of a timeless architecture, not so much some of these more modern, boxier, contemporary structures that we're seeing, but something that reflects a timeless architecture that makes it blend in with the surrounding buildings that you have on your site. The other thing that I would say is encourage that the landscaping also enhances the sites so that it becomes a good green space, lot of trees. But that will be up to you and the homeowners association, because I'm sure as people buy that, they're going to have a say in what they want to see in their own front yard. And other than that, the other thing that, Jerry, a lot of that stuff that they're proposing could also take place without the PUD approval, such as the roof.
That's correct.
So from a timing standpoint, we will be making a vote on this today. It'll go to council, who ultimately approve it. Then there is a 30-day waiting period after council approves it. But that does not necessarily mean you have to wait for this process to be completed to start some of the other aspects of the project, such as the re-roofing, some of the interior demolition, et cetera. And Jerry can walk you through which aspects can be done now, which aspects do you have to wait. And it may be that a lot of stuff that you want to do in the fall can all take place as council process this application. So don't, don't stand discouraged if you hear, oh, we have to have a meeting in October to approve your project. There are other things that can happen behind the scenes.
Yeah, I'm glad, actually, I'm glad you mentioned that, Chris, because, just to reiterate, this still has to come back, once the preliminary plan gets approved by council, final development plan still has to come back to Planning Commission and then to city council for the complete project.
So this is not the final and preliminary?
That's a preliminary. That's only a preliminary that you're approving right now. But to, but to answer your question though, Chris, there are some elements that they can do as a, you know, to work on, but we don't want to get too far down the line before we get the final done.
Okay.
We're not far off having the preliminary.
The final plan?
We're not that far from having the final done. There was, there was only two or three things were lacked.
Okay.
We didn't want to wait any more time, because I've been working on this for almost two years. So we felt we'd come in for the preliminary, that our intention has been down, and we can start publicizing it.
Mm-hmm.
And then the final plan, there's not a lot left for us to do. I mean, we're talking two weeks maximum before we can put in for the final.
And Chris, I'd like to comment, just to kind of dovetail what you're talking about, about the reuse of these existing buildings. And yes, we've had some tear downs, and sometimes we do have to tear down some of the buildings to, because we can't find a proper use for them. But it's been fortunate that we've been able to use the old school up by, behind Holy Trinity, which was converted to Cerebral Palsy, and for the use of Allison School to repurpose this building. So it's, we've done pretty well, Norwood's done pretty well in trying to preserve some of the history of these old structures.
And another comment on the setbacks, the, the new additions, and I don't know, I think a lot of people will hear that you're adding additional stories, and they think, oh, my gosh, these are going to be monster stories. Because you have set them back, again, taking a more thoughtful approach to design and incorporating the new construction, a person walking down Allison is not going to be overwhelmed by these new additions, by an stretch of imagination. So there is some comfort level, or should be some comfort level in the neighbors, that the new additions to the structures are not going to either overwhelm the structures themselves or overwhelm the surrounding neighborhoods because they are set back, because they are incorporated with the same type of materials and architecture as the original structures.
And for history purposes, if you hear, I, I went to North Norwood, so we didn't get along with Allison, but I can still support it. I would hope that when you're done with that, maybe we could do something with North Norwood School. There was a different class of people that came from North Norwood that we seemed like we were more attuned. But West Norwood actually ran everything, but it's, it's going to be really neat. And you're going to hear that a lot about Allison School. You're going to hear people coming up and saying, I went to Allison School when Sam Hell was the coach, and I went to Allison School when this, and I went to Allison School, you know, and St. E. That's going to be, that's a historical site down there, and you're going to hear a lot of that.
We've actually been approached by several people who went to school there.
Oh, yeah.
And we're taking their names and everything, because we're thinking about maybe having an open day, because a lot of people requested a walk-through.
Oh, that's great. That's, that's unbelievable.
We've talked about having like an open day before we start.
Oh, yeah.
And it's just getting organized, but it's also getting like the liability factor that we're just hoping that people can walk through.
Yeah, it's true.
So that's on the plans to do, but it's not scheduled. But if we can, we will do it.
No, that will really go over big. That will bring, bring a lot of attention to that. The people who were, you know, raised in West Norwood and went to Allison School, and even if they went to St. E., I mean, there was a lot of people that would love to come back and, and walk through that school. It would be fantastic.
I can't reiterate it enough that this project will change West Norwood.
Absolutely.
And people who live in West Norwood, who are concerned that what's happening on the east side isn't going to come their way, I, their patience will be rewarded. Those that are wary of this project, it'll be up to the city to make sure that the good folks who live there, emphasis on good folks who live there, can still take part as West Norwood grows and evolves.
Great.
I'd make a motion that the preliminary PUD for this project be approved.
Second.
Yes. And that, and in that motion, that will include 20?
26.
26. Yep, I got it.
Seconded by the mayor. Can we call the roll, Jerry?
Yes. Chris Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
John Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, the next step is it'll go to council. Councils have a public hearing, they'll pass an ordinance. It'll be up to the council to decide if they want to do it all at once, or if they want to do it at three, at over three separate meetings. I'm sure you would prefer it to be all at once at that September meeting, and hopefully the council, understanding the nature of the project and your timing and the fact that it'll come back again, would be comfortable passing it all at once at September.
Once again, it comes down to, you know, the stuff we can put down in the first floor of City Hall to let people see it. That way council feels that they've seen it, and the public has had the opportunity to see it, and will try to get it out where people can come and, and walk through there and take a look at it. That, that aspect of it might convince council to say, look, we've had it out, it's great.
Who should I deal with to put some displays up?
Mark's in there, the building department, Jerry's around, I'm around, I'm upstairs, whatever you need. Brenda, she runs things, so.
We'll get something in the next couple of days.
Yeah. And put it down there so the people can see it, what it is, where it's going to go, and I guarantee it'll generate interest.
You want to put price points?
Everything that you can put out there to inform it. You mean that you're not, if you're, whatever you're sure about, you know, the, everything. Whatever you're sure about, put up there. If you're not sure about it, don't put it up. All right?
Put Nate's home phone number on there.
Who?
Nate's.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
I was teasing the mayor, I said, well, put your home phone number down there.
Please, yeah.
I tell you, he makes good Irish coffee. No, 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 we, we don't want to get in the battle of the Realtors. This is my Realtor. Okay.
Moving on to communication, Miss Lays, we don't have any. At this time, can we excuse the absent member?
So motion to excuse the absent member.
Seconded by Mr. Brown, seconded by Mr. Williams. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Mayor Williams, seconded by Mr. Brown. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.